City of Gilbert, City Council Meeting. Today's date is Tuesday, April 25th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Thank you, and I'm going to apologize, our TVs are not working. Councillor Pontinon?
Here.
Councillor Heitzman?
Here.
Mayor Smith?
Here.
I also have in attendance Chief of Police Teacher, City Engineer Jamnik, Operations Director Lotiger, and myself, Clerk Zoller.
Thank you. We have a quorum. If everybody would please stand, join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approved additions?
Yes, I have one addition for the Ellers Bond Sale. If we could move that to the agenda. Underneath, we'll probably move it to the top underneath, "Old Business," but may move it into the beginning of it just so that we can get Mr. Ellers or Todd out on the road again.
Move it where?
Underneath, right after public input. Did we want to do that before you start yours?
Yeah.
Just so he can go ahead and get on the road.
Yeah. Before public input.
Sure. The sooner the better.
Yeah.
So if we can get a motion to enter that in.
Yep. I'll move this resolution onto the main agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Councillor Heitzman, seconded by Councillor Pontinon to add the resolution providing for the execution of lease/purchase agreement. And we will hear it before the public input. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero. Consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Moved by Councillor Heitzman, seconded by Councillor Pontinon to accept the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero. And then we will do the resolution for providing for the execution of a lease/purchase agreement. Mr. Ellers?
All right, I pushed the button this time, so we're good. Thanks for having me again, council members. Todd Hagan from Ellers and Associates. I wish I was Ellers last name, but that would be a big promotion for me.
My apologies.
None taken. Absolutely, that's great. It happens all the time. So, thanks for putting me on the agenda. So I was here a couple months ago in February. We sort of talked about the path we were going to take to finance the fire truck, and a 15-year lease/purchase was the best way to go. Send it out to leasing-type banks and your local bank to see what we get back. So then in March, we decided to add the Public Works Truck also to kind of bundle it together into one lease agreement for efficiency purposes. And so we had done that, sent a modified pre-sale report through the council just so you could see what we're doing. And then to come back tonight with the bid on the bond or the lease, I call it the bond because we do more bonds than we do leases, but same kind of concept, show you what we've got and for your consideration to approve it tonight. So today I've got a sale day report in front of the council and a resolution that the mayor had just talked about. So what I typically do is just kind of go through what, you know, transpired with the sale and where we're at and what the interest rate is and who the buyer of the lease is and kind of when we're going to close this. Because I know we need money while this week, but we talked them in next week. So we're hopefully going to close this on Thursday already on May 4th. So if you look at the second page or the first page after the cover, page to the sale day report, we talk about what the purpose is, and I just had mentioned that. So we're, I think, reimbursing ourselves for some costs of the truck, fire truck probably more in particular. And then we're also sort of anticipating some FEMA, some federal funds to come in as well. So we structured this lease 15 years for cash flow purposes. So typically these get paid through a property tax levy, but it's a lease with option to purchase, non-appropriation lease, so the money can really come from anywhere in the city that's duly appropriated to make a payment. So lots of flexibility there. We also wanted the flexibility of having it be what we call callable or prepayable on any day after closing at any time without penalty, right? Because we might have some, maybe an influx of money from the feds that come in, or we want to refinance it, right? So we'll be able to do that at any time on any day after May 4th. So we sent the proposal for, I think I had 12 banks on the list from the city, more leasing-type banks, but we did include, I think, the bank across the street as well. But we didn't expect a whole lot of response, probably from a sort of typical bank, as they like to purchase maybe 10-year paper as opposed to 15. So this is probably a little bit longer for them, and it might be a little on the high side too, because we're looking at $1,002,000 and some change. We got one bid back after some discussions from, actually it's from Kinetic Leasing out of Marshall, Minnesota, 30 miles west of my hometown down there. No relation to these guys, but it was kind of a nice conversation we had. So with some question and answer sessions from whoever wanted to bid off of it, it ended up being Kinetic Leasing was your bid that you would be looking for tonight. It was real close in interest rate to what our pre-sale showed at 6% and we're at 6.25%. Again, this can be refinanced at any time on any day without penalty. We do have some legislation into the legislature to sort of increase the term on a general application, equipment certificates that are authorized under state law currently at 10 years and we're pitching for 15. If that gets passed, that's going to be really one of the avenues that we'll look at to refi it at some point and should bring that interest rate down for you as well. But we know rates are going up and have been going up, so that's a respectable rate, especially when we bundle the two pieces of equipment here. So attached really is sort of the tabulation. There's only one bid, so it was pretty easy, and it's an easy sort of decision for you to make. If you want to go forward with this, I do have the final numbers attached as well. So it's got the total principal and interest payment every year, also has the fire truck sort of separate in there and the Public Works Truck as well. So you can kind of make payments from wherever you see fit and kind of keep track of it that way. And then after that, just kind of shows the graph of the 30-year kind of bond buyer index graph, just shows rates are up a little bit from like a year ago, right? Or a couple years ago. So we're kind of living in that world, and we're really happy that Kinetic Bank stepped up to the plate and will be fully funded for next week because we've got some bills to pay, right? So we're good there. Other than that, again, the council's got a resolution in front of them, and it's been drafted by Freiburger Buchanan Bond Council Team in Duluth. All the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, and it's all legal and everything because the documents are coming from those folks. And everybody seems to be able to close this by next Thursday, so we'll keep on that schedule. And so I'll yield for questions from the council, otherwise I'm looking for approval of that resolution, which will sort of approve the documents as well. So they can be even after approval, if your city attorney wants to take a look at them too, that's fine. We're pretty flexible too, so. Any questions from you folks?
Just so you can tell the public how much we're borrowing, how much interest we're paying in the 15-year term.
Yeah.
Just to inform the public, and this is for the fire truck and the Public Works Truck.
Yep.
So if you could tell them?
So the total of the lease is $1,0219, down about $5,000 from where we sort of preliminarily had it at $1,024. So we trimmed about $5,000 off of it because we saved some money on the cost of issuance. The fire truck portion is $976,000, and the Public Works Truck is $243,000 of that, so that equals the 1.219. Yeah, so we're looking at, I think we had probably in the budget for this, $90,000 or so per year for the fire truck, and rates went up a little bit, right? So we're at about 100, so we're not too bad, hitting the mark there as close as we could. The Public Works Truck, a lot less, right, to pay on that, so that's at around $25,000 a year. So that will be levied for typically. Again, I mentioned that it could come from any available source in the city. It's an appropriation lease, but so the payments are timed such that when you pay your property taxes on May 15th and October 15th and then get the settlements a month or two later, that's perfect timing for my August 1 and February 1 payment schedule here. So we've done these before, and that works out great. One question that the leasing company had was they'd never seen that structure before because they probably didn't have a financial advisor working with a city on any of these deals. So they're probably used to seeing monthly payments or something, which is a little bit more problematic in a city, right? Where, or a township or a county that would issue these types of agreements that they have to be timed with property tax collections, so we don't want you to fall short. So this will work fine for 2023 levy, for first collection in 2024 and beyond, so. Yep, good question.
So the total cost to the taxpayers of Gilbert with interest will be like $1,974,000 over a 15-year payback period?
About 1.97.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep. And again, we'll keep our eye on this. I keep an eye on all of my clients on at least a quarterly basis, so when interest rates start going down, you'll get notified almost every month that things are starting to kind of move in the market. And if it's something that we can refinance, we will let Jill know as soon as possible. Yep.
So that comes to like $115,000 per year? Was it 90 or 100 for the fire truck?
It ends up being about 100 for the fire truck.
100, okay. So it's 125.
125 a year.
Per year, okay.
Yep.
I don't have any more questions, I guess we're locked into this. We have no choice because fire truck needs to get paid, and so I'll make the motion that we move forward with this.
I'll second that. Motion by Councillor Pontinon, seconded by Councillor Heitzman to move forward with the resolution providing for the execution of a lease/purchase agreement with Ellers Public Finance Advisors and the amount of, for the lease, of $1,219,000.
Yep, thanks.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you very much, and I will drop off for the mayor. I'll walk up here, and I'm done. And if the mayor could sign the proposal form on the first line of these two sheets, and then we'll scoot it over to Jill, and then I can take these back with me. And we're good for tonight. Thank you very much.
I see Leo had a question.
I have a question. If you tell the people here what that's going to be on an annual basis and if you put it on taxes so that the people know what it's going to be on the, if it falls on the taxes, it will show up on the levy?
Yes, yes.
Can you estimate what the annual?
Do you want to know what your particular tax impact might be on your haul?
No, I just want to know what the impact could be on the city, because when the city will work out a mill bed, it'll have to be included.
Oh, 125, right? 125,000. 125.
125 per year.
Yep.
Which will actually affect the taxes. The reason I'm asking the question is because when you put it on taxes, roughly, my best estimate is that the top 44 taxpayers in the City of Gilbert will be bearing 80% of that cost. And that's a big hit. You're talking anywhere from 30 per taxpayer, and they're going to be carrying the load for that versus it being spread out equally or evenly.
Yep, and that's something we-
That'll be an increase on the mill bed.
Yep, that is something we talked about with council, that it may start out like that, but there could be some other options later on as far as working that out into a different charge. So it's something that we have flexibility on, so it will be property taxes probably at the onset. The Public Works Truck probably could be paid from sewer water revenues, so we have lots of flexibility and time to kind of think about that. But you are correct, that's typically how it's paid for from ad floor and property taxes. Yep. Yep, good question. Thank you very much for that. Name and title there, just there too, and Jill assigned the other side.
It's amazing how much a quarter of a percent passes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to public input. We have Mr. Elseppich.
Would you strike a question?
Sure. Any other public input?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I was here at your last council meeting regarding some of the land that you've had for sale. One of my clients is selling Orbegon. I told you about that. The city attorney and his attorney are now discussing what's happening. I have another client here who also has a piece of land for sale, and he's running into the same problem. I was wondering if we've got any information on whether, when he sells this land or if he sells this land, does that lease or that time, not the lease, I'm sorry, the timeframe for the new person to build, does that start over again? Have we gotten any information on that?
I have not. I know I've been trying to reach out to Mr. Brown to discuss with him, but as far as that, I don't know.
Okay.
And-
And that'll be something I will tell you, Mayor, that you might want to talk to him face-to-face. Telephone does not work. He can't, he, okay.
Yeah.
Can I have him come up and talk to you? Can I help arrange a time for that?
Yes, absolutely.
Sounds good.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Attorney Lindsey should be here by the end of the evening too, so we might be able to get some more clarity from him at that time.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Luke Soderling from Approved Plumbing, and I'd like to build a piece of, a building on a piece of property over there to help you guys pay for your fire truck. Bring some more taxes into the area here, right?
Nice meeting.
I propose to build on the location of the two pieces of property that are just to the, let's see, the west of the Holiday Gas Station. Jill has some maps there if anybody has any questions about that. There you go, you got a few copies of that. Thank you.
Who is your receptionist?
Oh, fantastic. My little scrubblings.
He's looking at these two pieces.
Oh, there you go.
Of both pieces?
Yeah.
Because he-
So we have a three-phase plan that we propose to bring here. The first phase would be to build a warehouse and an office, and the infrastructure for the additional phases. This would allow us to employ up to 14 people in skilled trades in plumbing and customer service as well as some management positions. Right now, I took the business over from my parents in 2020, and we've grown to seven employees and have doubled our revenue every year for the last two years. We see a very big need for skilled trades, plumbing, electrical, carpentry, roofing, et cetera. Phase two would be in the next three to five years, we'd build a second warehouse. This would allow us to expand into additional trades like the electrical, the plumbing, or the carpentry, the roofing. Phase two would allow us to grow to approximately 25 to 30 employees, again, skilled trades, more management positions, and some more customer relations positions. Phase three would bring us five to seven years out, and our plan would be to build a workshop for timber framing. It's something I've been doing on the side, some volunteer work. We're building a new lodge for storybook lodge out of timber frame. It's large timbers. Everything's held together with wooden pegs, basically the way Noah built the ark. That's the way we would build houses and buildings. This would allow us to build houses from scratch, and then having all the trades under one roof, be able to do everything in-house, turnkey, and the site up there would allow us to do all of that. That would allow us room to grow to about 35 to 40 employees. What we're looking for, and I've been in contact with a few other cities, looking at different pieces of property, different buildings, different options, and what I would ask tonight is to see if by informal vote, if this is something the city would be willing to work with us on. I have other offers to buy pieces of property of a similar size in a similar type of location for a nominal fee. So I'd like to open that up for questions for any of you here, the mayor and Mr. Pontinon and some of the others. And I talked about it today, but if you have any other additional questions, we'd welcome those and like to work through this with you.
So you said you could employ up to 30 people if, after all the phases are complete?
35 to 40 is our estimates right now.
So would you be able to house them in such a small, you know, parcel, you know, with your building size and everything?
Not housed, but for working?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, yeah.
To report to work and-
Yes, exactly.
Tools and-
No, I think with the site that we have there, that is about the maximum of what we'd be able to do, given both parcels. One is about two acres, the other's about three-quarters of an acre, and that should give us the room to be able to do what we need to do there. There would be expenses, as we talked about, of bringing in the sewer line that is behind the Holiday Gas Station up to the property. We would, you know, apply for grants for the IRRB for a lot of that stuff for the infrastructure, so we would handle all that. There'd be no additional fees or costs to the city, along with the purchase of the property for a nominal fee. We would also like to offer to pay for any realtor's fees or things like that, so that there's nothing that's coming out of the city's pocket in regards to selling this property.
So what you're looking for is just an informal vote to just continue with the process?
Yes, so basically right now I'm fielding offers. Like I said, I have another similar offer from another city. I grew up here in the Gilbert area. This has always been near our home and where we work and things, so I'd love to be able to build here. But we have to kind of pick one of the offers that we have out there. So if this is something you are all leaning towards, in favor of, or that would be possible, the nominal fee typically would be a dollar, so that would be kind of the standing precedent there.
I think I would like to work with them and move forward, but-
Yeah, I can, you want me to make the motion that we move forward with this informal discussion, our vote, and then to proceed with getting details down at a later date?
Yeah, I think a working session or something like that down the road, once we kind of decide, like I said, right now we're fielding options, and I wanted to give this to the City of Gilbert to see if this is something they would be interested in participating in.
Yeah, as far as I'm concerned, I don't see a problem with that. That land is kind of, can't be used for much else. I mean, it's kind of in an odd spot there, you know, so I guess I don't have a problem with that too.
Yeah, I'd like to see steps to move forward with that. Thanks for coming to us.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you. That's what I'm looking for, is just to see if, you know, something that we could work together on. If there are plans for developing the 30-acre parcel behind there and need for easements or anything to get sewer through there, we definitely want to work with you on that to make that an option, if that's something you decide is, you know, something that is worthwhile doing.
Was that like phase three that included that 30-acre parcel?
That would not, no.
No.
No, all of this would include the front two parcels here.
Yes, all three phases are right here on these-
That's correct. That's right, yep. What I'd like to do is with phase three is develop that back portion, so, like I said, I'll pay you $2 for that one.
So I guess I made the motion?
To move forward, I'll second that.
Motion by Councillor Pontinon, seconded by Councillor Heitzman to allow Advanced Plumbing to move forward with talks of the purchase of those two lots.
For a nominal fee?
Pardon me?
For a nominal fee.
For a nominal fee. Any further discussion?
Just remembering that this is informal, Sam?
Yep.
A couple of questions is, do we need-
Turn one off. There you go.
Do we need our city engineer to help out, kind of plot out the plots at all at this moment, or, you know, kind of help us put in the road where we were talking, kind of, so it's kind of a drawn-in road or anything like that? Is there anything on that we need?
That can happen at the next discussion.
I think at the next work session, we could try and figure that out, because I don't think it was ironclad of where that road was going to be.
Right, right.
But at the work section with Luke, we can figure out where he wants it and where the city, what the city wants to do with further infrastructure.
Right.
Okay, that was all. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero. Thank you, Luke. Any further public input? We'll move on to the reports from Mayor and Council. I have one for tonight. I'd like to recognize our city employees from the wastewater treatment plant and Sam, and actually I'll appreciate, show appreciation for all the Public Works and staff down at the water treatment. Earlier this month, City of Gilbert received a certificate of excellence from the, from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. And I'll just read a little blurb from what they sent us. The Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, MPCA, is recognizing the City of Gilbert for outstanding operations. To receive this recognition, facilities must demonstrate consistent compliance with monitoring, operations, and maintenance requirements. Submit accurate, on-time reports to the MPCA and employ- Quote, "The MPCA recognizes their considerable efforts and deeply appreciates their service to their community," unquote. Recognizing facilities this year has even more significance as the MPCA celebrates the 50th anniversary of the Clean Water Act. The Clean Water Act established the basic framework for regulating pollution in waters by creating water quality standards to protect drinking water and to maintain a healthy aquatic community for animal and recreational uses. Thanks to these standards, treatment facilities were developed to clean water before it is returned to a river or stream. We sincerely humbled, we are sincerely humbled by the consistent dedication of our staff and their hard work, resilience and integrity through the years, working with engineers, vendors, and contractors to ensure the city meets all deadlines and requirements without complaint and with integrity. Minnesota has approximately 1,600 municipal and industrial wastewater treatment facilities in the state of Minnesota. We are one of 248 that qualify for the outstanding operations recognition. So, I thank Trudy, Tara, Jason, Josh, when he was here for the last few years of enduring hurdles they had to, to keep our facility to this standard, and of course, Sammy for being part of that and helping them out. I thank you. The city thanks you. I do have the certificate, I got framed, that I'll give to Sammy, they can hang it down in the office for a job well done. Thank you. Councillor Pontin?
I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you. Nothing further. We'll move on to reports from staff boards and commissions, and I see our city attorney just arrived in time.
Mayor, I apologize for being late.
Quite all right. Do you have anything for us tonight?
No formal report, but I am happy to answer questions if the council has any.
Thank you. City engineer, John?
There's no formal, formal report this evening.
Thank you. Chief teacher?
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. Fire chief, not present. Public Works Operations, Sammy?
Thanks, guys, for giving me all the time. I got a couple items here. The first one is, kind of been just doing snow plowing, just a report on snow plowing, been doing that. It's not fun, but everybody hates snow plowing in April, but we're getting done what we need to do. Street sweeping's coming up next, we started that here about a week or two ago, and we'll continue to do that here, this, probably next week and the end of this week. Campground opens up, I believe, next week, right, Wendy? Which, you know, it's going to be muddy and messy down there, hopefully towards the end of the week, tomorrow, or tomorrow, Thursday, we get the water on to the bathrooms. I don't know if we're going to have it in the sites yet due to the cold, cold temperatures yet. It's something we're going to have to keep an eye on it. So, we'll have water at the bathrooms though, so we'll just have to play by ear. I know it's going to be kind of a muddy mess down there where we did, where we did construction for the new sites. We still got to get those inspected, which we're hoping to do here at the end of this week. Electrical's on and everything should be good there, it's just getting the sites prepped and whatnot. You know, the contractor did what he could at the end of the year last year with, just running into time and weather. He had a bunch of black dirt laid out, and I think he put some seed down here and there, so we'll work with him this spring to, if we have to add class five to get it drivable, and we do, I just got to go down and talk to him, because hopefully it'll start drying out here, and we'll be able to get at to that, so that's all I have for that. One other thing is the library, Community Center ADA bathrooms. I got the prints from DSGW on the board, or the closet door over there, those kind of are the final prints. We're planning to go to bids, or putting it out for bids here tomorrow, unless I hear some other, hear any input from council, if there's any changes that you guys would like to make, we can look at it here after council meeting, and if there's any suggestions you want to see different, we can bring it up to them and they'll make changes. So, we'll go to bids, we'll take bids starting tomorrow. There's an inspection day, I believe, of May 4th for this. They'll, I'll meet them down there and we'll have somebody on site down there, I think it's at nine o'clock. They'll, they'll put something in the paper and wherever they go out to advertise for this, too. Then we're going to be taking bids here at City Hall, May 15th at 11:00, 11:00 a.m., and then we will bring it to council at the 23rd meeting for you guys either to accept or to deny, so. There's going to be also an ad alternate, I think is the right word, where we're looking at the bathrooms, the one bathroom there, and that's going to be all ADA compliant, and then I also added, had them update the men's and women's bathroom, paint new dividers and new sinks. So, it's going to be kind of an ad alternate. I believe there's also some new lighting in the men's bathroom where it was really dim and wasn't very good, so kind of got an all-around project coming up, so. Other than that, that's all I have for now.
I had a question on that. Are we kind of rushing into this? Why are we doing this tomorrow? I'm just not quite understanding. I mean, shouldn't we like have a walkthrough and see if we agree with this? You know, we don't really have a lot of time.
I mean, if that's what you guys would like, then we just got to push out dates.
Personally, I would. I just, you know, looking at the blueprint and then actually standing in there, I would like to really see, and maybe I'd have a suggestion or two about why wasn't this put here or there, you know? It seems like we're kind of rushing it.
I mean, if you want...
I don't, I don't know. Is there a timeline? We have to?
No, there's no timeline. No.
It kind of seems like we're just jumping ahead.
There will be a timeline on the CDVG portion. There will be a timeline on the CDVG portion that they're giving.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, how, when is that?
But you can, you can request an extension on that as well. I mean, it's a, it's a year bid.
Yeah, there's enough time to do it. It's not pressing at all, I just, I didn't know anybody would want, you know, to go down there or whatnot, but I'm perfectly fine meeting you down there tomorrow, or if you want, or if you can.
I'd like to bring that print down there and look and see what you've got going.
Yeah, that's no problem.
What time, 10 o'clock tomorrow?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we'll see you at 10.
Okay.
Oh, and just another thing, on that street sweeping, does the state ever help out on the main street for street sweeping on the sand?
They do, and they don't. So, probably over the last three years, I've seen them come through. Prior to that, they haven't, but they don't usually come through until it's, it's late, probably two or three weeks after we went through and did it. Like, we, we did it once already, and it's nice, because when the big trucks go by and whatnot, it just keeps that dust down, especially when maybe they're going a little bit fast, but they push so much wind, it's like a dusty, it's just dusty, so that's kind of one of the first places we hit, is try to just to, to get that dust down when people are driving by and that wind is blowing on Main Street, so. But yeah, to answer your question, they do. I've seen them over the last couple of years drive.
Do you have to contact them, though, to?
No, no, they just done it.
If you did contact them, would they come even before you swept?
I, I don't know. I, you know, I, I could try.
Just try to save on equipment.
Yeah.
If they'll do it for us first, that would be great.
Yeah, yeah. No, I can try next year here and see if they'll come, come through sooner than later, but yeah, that's no problem.
That's all I have.
Other than that, they don't have anything else, other than agenda.
We have the mining, the mining, the fence.
Okay. Well, that's on the agenda here. So, the mine fence, this, this is something that is kind of an ongoing thing over the last, well, it's kind of an ongoing thing, of fixing fences. Recently, we've had some, some fence that I think it's too big of a job for what we have, so I went and got a quote from Go Bronson Excavating. They, I've seen them do fence before, and they, they do stuff around the area for, for mine line wreck, like fence stuff, so I had them give me a quote to fix some of our big spots on, on this. I know there's, I know two to three, maybe four spots that are, two of them are, are two to three, or a couple hundred feet, 250 feet, two, I think there's another one that's 200 feet, another one that's 160, so I, I kind of just put a, had them give me a time and materials quote, so we can maybe hire them, you know, day by day, or hire them for a couple of days to, to try to come and fix some of the big spots for us that are, you know, hard to get at, we don't have the, the equipment. I would buy the material and they would put it up, but this is something that's, there's some spots, like I say, that needs to be fixed, and it's just, it's just too big of a job for us, so that's where I was looking at, to see if city council would approve this, you know, whether we do a day by day or whether we do two days, but we're looking at probably about $3,750 a day for what they, what they would bring.
Have they done fencing projects for us before, Sam?
Not, no, no, they haven't. They've never done fencing projects before, but I've seen them do fencing, they're set up, I think they got a mini excavator with a air-operated hammer that pounds the fence post in, and they come by with a four-wheeler and...
So, their one day of productivity is significantly greater than?
What we would do, yeah, yeah. And I, I mean, we would still try to do the spots where there's, there's holes in the fence that are three, four feet, we can go and tie fences. It's, it's the bigger portions, you know, the 250 feet, the 200 feet, 160 feet, hard to get at. Pick in the fence, you know, there's some spots where the fence is blown over for 80 feet, you know, they would come in and have them pound fence posts and try picking that up with the excavator, so, you know, like I say, if, if that's something we want to do, or we want to put off till later, but this is something I think we need to do, because some of the spots are really close to the campground, some of the bigger sections, you know.
This, this list from the county, have you prioritized that? Have you?
I, I did go through it, and that's where, that's where I would be looking at, you know, doing the bigger stuff, having Go Bronson do the bigger stuff, and we would go do the, the three-foot openings, the two-foot openings and stuff like that, where somebody just drove, cut the fence, drove a four-wheeler through, we'll, we'll take care of that, you know? But that's where, you know, you give, if, if council approves me to get, do two days, I would prioritize the, the ones that's close to the campground first, and then we would go out from there, is kind of what I was planning on doing, so.
I've also reached out to a few different sources to see if there's any grants available, so if I hear anything positive in that respect, then we'll go out for those as well, to maybe offer you that cost.
Yeah, that was a question I had. And then I was wondering, is there specs for this fencing that have to follow by St. Louis County specs?
We, we've been just doing what, what has been there, six-foot, just that wire fence with eight-foot posts, that's kind of what was there, what is all I've been doing.
Paragraph two, the fence should be a non-climbable, blah, 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 blah.
Okay. So, that's their only spec?
The, what I read, yeah.
Yeah, I think, Sean, the, the only spec.
Okay.
It seems like liability-wise, this isn't something to kick down the road until September, October, this is something, especially with camping season coming up, that fence around the campground and pit area.
As, as, you know, if we're worried about having enough money or whatnot like that, we can, we can just, you know, say two days. Sam, what can you do in two days, and then come back to council on what we've, how much production we got, you know, be willing to do that. This is a good time for Go Bronson, too, because of road restrictions are on, this is something we can move forward here in beginning of May, and it'd be really good, so.
I wonder if we contacted our insurance provider, because we don't want a liability issue if we're not, you know, putting the fence up in a timely manner. I don't know if anybody's asked them about this, you know, Aspire Insurance?
I don't ask too many questions, if I don't have to, on that.
Yeah, I, I just say that.
I know it's a liability.
If we don't do it, if we don't do it by a certain time, that we're going to be liable if somebody did get hurt, you know, Brian, do you have anything?
I think you're always at a liability, that's why they hand you this thing every year, you know, as mine.
How much time do they give you to comply, though, you know, is there? Anything? I'm sorry, Brian. They've never?
They've never came and said, hey, you got this long to fix it, or you got this many, I mean, but they just show you, as far as I know, they just show you where the risks are around the pit in our property. So, it's, then it's up to us to take that and, okay, how much of a risk is it, and do we want that liability, knowing that we have risks out there?
That's a question.
Yeah.
And that, by, it seems to me that by the county handing this to us, they pass that buck directly on to our lap, now it's your baby, handle it, and if we take some mitigating steps to, to show that we are attempting due diligence, then we're on the right path. So, to that end, I'll take Sam's advice and make a motion to approve Go Bronson to do two days worth of fence building and see where we land by the next council meeting or after that, or the next couple of council meetings, just an update, find out what's left susceptible to where we're being errant.
Right, and then also on that, I'm going to have to provide the fence and the fence posts for Go Bronson, so I'm going to probably have two to three grand in fence posts and fence for that, just to have on, on site here, so, just, I don't know if that needs to be also in the motion or, or whatnot.
So, are they available to do the work? Do they need the frost to come out more or anything like that? They didn't say anything?
Whether it was snow, there's no frost, so, you know, they're available to do the work.
But as far as conditions of rutting up the areas with their machinery, that's no concern?
It's all in the backwoods and, you know, down on the point, down by the campground a little bit down there, by where the cliffs are, there's some bad spots down there, you can get them all to them, where you don't have to go through property or whatnot, so.
Seems to me that moving on the campground area would be a huge focus. So, I'll amend my motion to do two days of Go Bronson approval and see where we're at. Additionally, the, the fence post and fencing itself, that authorized you to purchase that, whether that needs to be amended or not, that's the motion.
So, the cost is about $7,000 a day they projected for their cost, for their labor cost?
I, I projected about $3,750 per day.
Per day, so?
Plus material.
For two days, it'd be about seven grand?
Yeah, and then...
We provide the material?
You know, I, I figured about $5,000 bucks for all the material up to about 1,000 feet, so if we had 1,000 feet of fence, it'd be about five grand.
And this is a yearly?
Yeah, we get this yearly, yep.
So, so we got to keep that in mind for the budget?
Yep.
You know, for next year.
You know, this stuff hasn't been, it's, it's just kind of like an ongoing process, it doesn't happen every year where it's down, it just, you know, it's kind of ongoing process that, you know, usually it's smaller chunks where, like I say, we've handled it in the past, but these are some pretty big chunks where we can't handle it anymore, you know, so if we get these fixed, it should be good for 15 years, you know, you would think, so.
The reason some fool the tinsnip?
Yeah, well, if... Yeah. Well, if it's just that, then we can go back and put fence in between the two fence posts and patch it. It's.
And that's the reason for it because you got vandals out there cutting holes in it and spreading it and.
You know, and that's, that's where I've always told the guys, you know, you know, write down the date you, you fixed the fence and when you're there. So this date we fixed this hole, this date we fixed this hole, just so we have record because there's been times where they've went, they fixed it, went to lunch, come back and there's a hole in it. So just so we have documentation on, on, you know, time and when we fixed it is, is what, what I'm looking at. So.
So you made the motion?
Motion by.
So I'll second it.
Motion by Councilor Heitzman, seconded by Councilor Poten to allow Sammy to reach out to, who was it? Miss it? Gobronson and to hire for two days of work and to purchase the equipment necessary. Any further discussion?
No, don't, don't give them permission to purchase all the equipment, just the materials.
The materials, yes. Sorry. I stand corrected. No, the material.
New front end loaders?
Yeah, right.
I understood.
How much would the materials you expect would cost? Just so we have an idea.
If, like I say, if we did 1,000 feet of fence, I figured it would be five grand. So if we do, you know, in two days, if we do 500 feet, it's going to be 2,500 bucks, somewhere in there. It's kind of what I was, you know, what I, what I kind of got for prices.
I guess we have to do it. We have no choice.
That's what I look at it.
Yeah, right.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero. Anything else, Sam?
Well, I do have. Want to wait for a new business or if you want to do it now? I've got A and B under new business. Or we can wait.
Yeah, we will wait. Give you a break.
Thanks. I have another note. I don't have nothing.
Thanks. All right. Moving on to the advisory boards. We have a letter of resignation from Lonnie Gobronson effective July 1st, 2023. Lonnie is resigning from the planning and zoning administration and the effective date is July 1st of 2023.
Yeah, I'd like to personally thank Lonnie for the time that he put into that. We kind of recruited him. So, and he did give us time to help out the city of Gilbert and it's appreciated and I'm sure the council feels the same.
Absolutely. Thanks Lonnie for your service.
His generosity and his time and his resources is really appreciated by the city.
Yeah, Gobronson Excavating really, yes. They deserve a lot of thanks. What they've done for this town, their donations.
So I regretfully make a motion to accept this letter of resignation and wish Lonnie well in his travels.
Motion by Councilor Heitzman.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Councilor Poten to accept Lonnie Gobronson's letter of resignation effective July 1st, 2023. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero.
We do have Paul on video here, so I'll turn it up so everybody can hear. Our TVs are not working.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. I just have two quick items. One is an update. So Jill and I had a good conversation this afternoon, a project for the campground board. We are going to, starting our next meeting on May 3rd, we're going to start putting together a little bit more formalized standard operating procedures for the campground that we'll talk about, everything from opening procedures, closing procedures, audits, the basic day-to-day operation of the campground. And so that's a large project. It will take probably most of the season to do that project, but I wanted to take a moment to solicit from, from the council if there were any specific broad topics that you'd like us to consider in putting together that document. The intention is to be able to have some consistency in how we operate the campground and have a place to go as kind of a guidebook, if you will, for how things run. That has been a problem in the past in that if we ever had any staff turnover or whether it's in, in city hall or at the campground, that there's a, not really a playbook, if you will, to help people move, you know, to kind of move things forward. And so that is, that is a project that we're going to be starting, starting this month. If you do have any comments, like I said, broad topics which you would really like to see in there, could you please funnel those through Jill and initially we'll get them to us so that we can make sure that, you know, that we can address that. I don't want to take a lot of time now, but I just want to make a broad request to the council to funnel those requests through Jill and we will certainly include them. And then the second is just an update real quickly on the, the process for going through the new reservations platform. We've got the criteria put together and we're starting to get meetings in session, meetings scheduled. The one thing that I wanted to check back with is if we have a designated individual from the council that wanted to be on the committee, I need to know who that person is so that I can work on meeting times to make sure that they're able to work this day. So I don't know if you have a person that is playing or if you'll be able to get that to his eye or meet through.
I just have a quick question right back for you, Paul. You mentioned working on standard operating guidelines or procedures. I'm assuming these are, are guidelines and not necessarily mandates for operation?
Correct. They are not. They wouldn't obviously be as mandates. They would be, it's kind of the index of if this happens, this is the process for handling this.
Right.
Everything from, you know, when the campground host comes in for the season, you know, who is the person, who is the person in city hall or the designated city hall that's going to imagine this? That's a, that's a procedural type of like how to document this. And it would be something that could be modified as however frequently we need to. But it's, you really do need to have, here's a, here's a good example of a very important chapter that has to be there is crisis planning. So if, when severe weather happens, what is the procedure that the campground host is expected to follow? Or if there is, you know, got to be an injury or more serious on a campground, who are the people that, that the campground host would have to notify to make sure that we're closing a little bit on all of the process types of things. And, and it really gives some, not rules, not being, but it does give some guidelines as to here, here are the people or here are the departments that need to be included in issue X, Y, or Z.
Thanks, Paul. Yep.
So I guess my question after the reservation system and who, who in the council we should include for those meetings?
I guess.
Can we volunteer guys that aren't here? Is that a thing? Regrettably, it won't be me, Mr. Skirby.
I think I'd like to reach out to these other two and see if they're available before I would commit to it.
Okay. Is that something that you'd be able to do by our next meeting on the third?
The third? Yeah. I could probably reach out tomorrow or and see if either of them would be available.
Okay. I appreciate that. That's all I got.
Thank you.
FYI, Councilor Skansis is out of town training on that firing. So if you're going to reach out, text.
Yeah, perfect. All right. Moving on to the library director, Sue. See?
Sue on tonight.
Okay. Then we'll move on to Wendy, campground director.
Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
And it's nice to be back up here. I don't know. I was ready to turn around when I hit Hinkley and I saw all the snow. I was wearing shorts and a tank top last week. So, but I'm glad I'm here and we did manage to get into the campground. We did a little shuffle with the Jeep to try to get in, but we're in there. And I did get to go check the bathroom and the new bathroom floors look awesome. They're, they're, they're wonderful. They'll be easier to clean and they look neat and tidy. I do have some campers coming in Monday and I already forewarned them to fill their tanks so that, you know, they won't, in case there's no running water, they've got water on board. But I am glad to hear that hopefully we'll have the showers going before they get here. But other than that, I've got nothing else going on. So just looking forward to opening the campground up and getting things rolling for the summer. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Before you take off, I have, it's, it's bothered me since a year ago when, when you talked about the abundance of dog scat from, from dog walkers. Does that, does that look like it's subsided a little bit with public awareness of the problem?
Well, the snow hasn't melted yet.
Well, they're the dark spots.
When, when next week, when I go around cleaning up, I will let you know.
Yeah, I'm curious to see how that goes. Cause that's, it just disturbs me that people are that lazy, but.
Well, when we got there on Friday, there was a rotter running loose in the campground. So I don't know what else to do.
Is animal control to be contacted on that tie? How does that work?
Yep.
When we are notified, then we usually contact Masabi Main Society and then they'll send a truck over. Excuse me. We've also, and if it's after hours, it's not uncommon for us to put in the back of our squad and run it over to Virginia and put it in a temporary kennel. So, yeah, if we get a call and we can catch it, we'll usually transport to Virginia. So.
Do we till, do we still contract with that payload, the ones that used to take our van?
No, we're with Masabi Main Society. They came in about $1,000 cheaper than the last time we bid it. So.
Oh, they're nearly, no, okay.
Anything else?
Thank you, Benny.
Thank you.
No.
Yeah.
Couple of years ago, we implemented the pole with dog bags on it. And when we did that, that reduced our problem by a lot. And we provide the little bags, you just go up there and take them and use them. Food for thought and it's not a big expense. I'm sure you're limited with your budget, but that helped a lot because I know right now I haven't got anything. So anything you can do to encourage the public to?
I will bring that up at our campground committee meeting on Wednesday and see what they think.
At least reduced a half from the problem we had over years. You know, it's a common problem. And it's, it's not a big expense.
I think this year, I don't think that they plowed out the campground during the winter. So I think it eliminated a lot of the extra walking through that has happened in previous years. So.
Great. Yeah.
All right.
Thanks, Benny.
Thank you. Clerk Zoller.
Thank you. I've got a couple of updates here. First of all, currently we are going to start doing disconnects for unpaid utility bills. In the near future, our current balance is about $109,000 of bills that are unpaid or in no payment plans or they haven't kept their payment plan. So we'll work diligently to bring that balance down. Currently, we have about $69,671 in the campground fund. Once the invoice is received for the bathrooms, that amount will be transferred out, but I will put that on the next consent agenda once we're invoiced. Our general checking has about $431,364 and there's about $165,846 in bills on this current register that will clear. I'm also hoping that the $83,742 for our water treatment plant upgrade that I triple R B gave us a grant for will be approved in full. I should get word from that here shortly. So that will be a nice deposit if we get that to go through.
How much was that?
$83,742. Correct. That was from the work that was done for the piping by Magni shortly after the safety upgrade. So was that a 2020, 2021 in there?
Is this the wastewater treatment plant?
Nope. This will be water treatment plant. Correct. It's an older grant that no receipts were just submitted or taken care of. So I took care of that and hopefully we'll get that expended then and reimburse us for those expenses. I think you remember back this maybe fall or was it right away in January, we had approved the bottle filling station. We were going to go and order it, but it has increased from 786 to 959. Looking for direction of can I go ahead and order that with the difference or do you want me to wait and see if they come down a little bit back to where they were? We'd like to try and get this in by summer if possible, but if you want us to wait a bit, a little bit longer, it's, you know, a little bit more expensive, 100 to 200 dollars. So I'd like direction on that. Going with the same one, same style, just it's increasing price. I'm sure it'll culminate in everything else. Aside from that, those are the only three items I have. So I would just need direction then on the bottle filling station, if I can go forth and order that or if we'd like to wait because there is an additional cost.
We passed, we agreed that we could do it, but there's like $200 more now?
Correct.
So you just ask it for another $200 to?
Correct. Our previous approval that was done January 10th, Paulus, Poten seconded, it was approved up to a maximum of 786, but it has gone up in price. So current price is 75988. I would imagine there's probably shipping and taxes on top of that.
So you need an additional $230 to let it come?
Yeah. And I don't know what shipping and taxes are at this moment. I just kind of looked at the original price. It was almost 1,000. It's come down a little bit. So we can do one of two things, you know, prove the difference or sit on it a little longer and see if it comes down more. I don't know that it will. It's kind of a.
Seems like it already came down some. Might as well strike while the iron's hot figuratively.
Right. And then too, once we get this installed, we can eliminate the cooler in our office as we do rent that. And from what I've talked to everybody, it's never been cleaned. So this will be a little more sanitary.
So I could make a motion to upgrade the previous motion from 750 to 930, is that what you're saying?
It was 786. This current one is 95988 and it would be plus taxes and shipping.
To include the additional cost and taxes and shipping?
Correct.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilor Heitzman, seconded by Councilor Poten to allow Jill to go ahead and purchase the water system in the amount of $959.88 plus tax and shipping.
Correct.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries three, zero.
I'm guessing I could say one more thing. I heard that the LGA might be increased. I haven't heard a lot of, you know, formalized, but it sounds like that maybe we'll be getting a little bit more in our LGA, which is a big chunk of money that the city gets for doing business. So hopefully we'll get notification if that went through and how much more we'll get. So that's a positive.
Absolutely. We'll take it.
When, when do you actually get those funds? When do they come into the cities?
I believe the LGA is in July.
Okay.
The first one, and they do it in two, and I think it's July and then December is the next one, but they do them in two deposits.
So we're getting last year's LGA in July.
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. On to old business, the wastewater treatment plant.
They, we have, let's see, where do we start? They got all the membranes installed, roughly flowing about 178 gallons a minute out of each basin, when before we were barely doing, I think, 125. So we increased our flow by quite a bit, and I believe it's on the projected flow list of what we were supposed to do. There is some, some other stuff that we can't do to finish the job quite yet due to the high flows of spring runoff and whatnot, so we kind of held, had, kind of held off on having the contractors do some of the final stuff until the flows get, go down. We did have to bypass for about a week, week and a half here throughout the last, yeah, throughout the last week and a half, so we considerably bypassed quite a bit. Other than that, I believe the project is on schedule and it's still, still going through. On that note, I know there was some questions from ScanTech's end, when, when do they think they'll be done or will be done with them on the project, from what Peter asked me one time, or when does the end date for the project look like, is what he asked. And I told him I didn't know. I told him there's ongoing issues at the front of the plant and at the back of the plant that, you know, always have had issues since we put this plant in. I didn't know if that was their design, or if we have to sit down and talk with them, with Mr. Lindsay, or what we got on that end.
So what you're saying, there's more upgrades that have to be done to make that plant work, that's the way it's supposed to?
Well, there, I mean, not, not to the plant itself. This is stuff that, we upgraded the plant, but during the upgrading of the plant, this issue arose at the beginning of the plant with sludge settling and, like a sludge, settling is a big issue at the beginning of the plant for us, where we never used to have that issue before. So I don't know if that was a design issue, or if that is on ScanTech, or what. Back end of the plant, we don't have enough digester or storage room, when they said we would have enough. So there's some issues on the front end and the back end of the plant, is what I'm saying, you know, that are still issues, ongoing issues, so.
Not necessarily unresolved punch list items, but more functionality?
Right. No, is that, where do we go for that, you know, and that's where, you know, I know, Peter asked me, what do you see this project as far as finish date? I'm like, well, the front end of the plant is having issues, the back end of the plant is having issues. We didn't have these issues before, so you tell me. I, you know.
Is there room to upsize, you know, those parts of the plant that need to be to make it run efficiently, or like it's supposed to run, like they kind of told us it would?
I don't know those answers. That's like engineering answers, what can we do to upgrade to help the front end and the back end, and I don't know those answers. You know, it's.
But we can live with the way it is right now, but it's not running as efficiently as it could.
As it should, right, right, yeah. Yeah, we're hauling, we're having, like, you know, like on the front end of the plant, we have sludge settling in, right where our pumps are that pump up the MBRs, to the fine screens, and we're, we are having that cleaned by A1 every two weeks. Because if we don't, then our fine screens plug up. If, say, if we get a high flow and some water comes down, if we don't clean that every two weeks, it causes an issue at the fine screens where they'll plug up the hopper, hopper over a flow, we'll get called out, it'll be a big, big, huge mess.
Is that that chute that the sludge goes down, that's getting plugged up and it's backing up into the fine screens?
Yeah, yep. It's, yeah, you got the trauma wheel, that's where you get your, anything that's smaller than two millimeters falls through and goes to the MBR for process. If it doesn't, it goes into a hopper. Well, this hopper then is the press, it's called, so that press presses out all the water and whatnot. Well, we have issues with that press overfilling and spilling onto the floor, and it's like, it's icky. So it's, and that happens, like I say, if we're running one pump, but if we don't clean it out, then another pump, or this pump decides to kick on, and there's a lot of that sludge around that pump, that pump inlet, well, then it all goes through that fine press and fine screen and gets plugged up and jams up and.
So does Stantec have any solutions for this that they've told you about?
No.
No.
So, so I know, I know I had an email out to Brian about, you know, some guidance on what we need to do and.
So is that the back end of the plant you're talking about?
That's the front end.
Oh, that's the front?
That's the front end.
So what are the back and the plant issues?
The digester, the hauling, yeah, the digester is, it's, so there's a couple things that we're wasting a lot more than what we ever did with the old plant. We don't have a return line, which they said we don't need a return line, where you can return 80% or 50% of your sludge to the front of the plant to get it, to.
To re-dig.
To re-digest it. So we don't have that, so we gotta waste, I think they're wasting, you know, a couple thousand gallons out of each basin per day. Well, then you gotta hold it so long before you can land apply. So in that process, we can only hold, we can't, we don't have enough storage for all of it. And there is different ways that we could possibly, possibly make enough room, but, you know, we need some guidance on that. What, what, what do we do?
So you're having to make more trips to the bio solid?
That, well, that's, that's been going to Grand Rapids, because we don't land, we don't land apply in the wintertime.
So you have to make more trips there, because it's not fully degraded itself?
Right, right. When, like, in the beginning of the process, when we were going through that, through all the engineering and design, they were saying, yeah, there's going to be more than enough storage, more than enough storage, you should be able to, you know, hold this for nine months and not have to land apply.
Another design flaw.
Yeah.
I'm still wrapped up in the fact that this is a state-of-the-art plant and we have ischiness overflowing onto the floor. I mean, that's, that just shouldn't be a thing.
It was kind of a couple part process to get fixed. Let's focus on the MBR, getting that fixed, and now it's.
Concentrate on that.
Concentrate on that, so we, we're getting to where we need on that. But now it's these other ones, and like I say, I had a conversation with Peter Daniels the other, maybe a couple of weeks ago, and he's like, Sam, what do you see the end product being? And that's what I told him. Well, he didn't say much after that, and, you know.
Back to the drawing board, I hope.
Yeah, so that's where, I just want to let council know, you know.
So how far away from the membrane replacement is that going to, how long till that's finalized?
I would say over the next two to three weeks. You know, it all depends on flow.
Already a 40 to 50% flow rate improvement that you're noticing?
30 to 40, yeah, 30. I wouldn't go 50, because we were at like 100, 110 before, now we're up to, you know, 150, 170. So.
So significant.
Yeah, it's significant, but it's still not where we need to be.
So is that?
It's where we need to be.
Is that extra flow causing problems now, overwhelming the rest of the system now, or what?
As far as I know, no. What we're having to do now, because there's a lot of water, water dilution in it, so what Tara has learned over, and dealing with, you know, different, the Ovivo people and different operators, is we've been adding sugar to these membranes, and that, that's under high flow like this, it's water, basically, a lot of water coming in, so there's no, no food for the bugs, basically. So we've been adding sugar to each basin. I don't know if it's one, if it's five pounds a day, because we're not getting enough BOD, they call it, into the basins, because it's more water than, you know, food, which is kind of part of the process.
So you need more bacteria to break down the solids?
To feed the food, to eat the solids, yeah.
Extra food.
So, yeah, so that's one thing that we're kind of having a little issue with, so we've been feeding them, feeding them, feeding them, and that's, that's, I guess, kind of a standard deal, so. I don't know if it's going to be always like this, every summer, every spring, but, you know, we had historical snows and a lot of, a lot of melt really quick, you know. Yeah.
Well, hats off to you and Tara's company for keeping it rolling as we try to figure out.
So, like I say, the membranes are doing good. The membrane process, that Kubota upgrade is doing what it's supposed to, doing what they say, so.
How about the blower issue that you had before? You said the blowers were amping up?
Um, yeah, we actually.
Did it trip out?
So what we did is we, through the process on that end, we found out that there's two settings for the blowers, and we were on one of the wrong settings, and I can't remember what it is. One is constant, one is variable, and maybe that's where we were running on the variable speed drives for the blowers, so they're, you know, where, instead of a constant power. So that dropped the amps to where it needed to be. And it dropped the heat and everything, and now we're, we're in the operating range we need to.
And you've got enough floor capacity?
Yeah. Every, so everything is, so far, so good, on that aspect of it, yep, that, so, working with Amtech on that, and Craig, I believe, is, you know, we, we found out there, and then the guys from Kubota helped us out on that, too, so.
So long and short of it is, we've got some work to do there yet to get to where it needs to be, but we can, we can make do with what we have right now for as long as it takes to fix the other problems.
Right, right, yeah, yeah. And, you know, that's where I don't know, you know, we gotta, we gotta talk to Brian is, what are we responsible for? What are they responsible, are they responsible in any of this? So that's where, that's where I'd like to go with it one day.
Yeah, ongoing, yeah. Any further on the wastewater treatment plant? Okay, moving on to the water treatment plant.
Let me think here, water treatment plant, okay. The SEH, I talked to them here last Friday. I know we tried to get on the agenda for the soil boring, but that'll be on the agenda for next, next month here. We're going to go soil bore around the area where the new plant and design is going to be, so that'll be on the next agenda. Hopefully in the next, I can't remember, I talked to Kevin about getting plans and prints, you know, so hopefully in the next couple of weeks, I'll, I'll be able to get a plans and prints for, for us to either put a committee together, or if each council member wants to sit down and go through them and look at them, I'm okay with that, or like I say, a committee to meet with ScanTech, or SEH and go over, over these and whatnot, and then come back to council with recommendations, or just working with the engineer on moving forward on design. But like I say, hopefully I'll get some more information for next council meeting on that.
Excellent. Before we move on, any further info on that, Sam? I need to take a five-minute recess to use the bathroom. Five-minute recess for five minutes.
Was there a month ago with Sam to look at that? What are they talking about, just making one ADA? You know, like a uni, you know, where both can go into the one? And the other one's going to be a men's only? That's what I have to explain to me tomorrow.
Yeah.
All right. All right, we'll resume with the regular council meeting. It's timed 6:30 PM. I'm sorry, 7:30 PM. Wow. I need to get it digital. All right, we'll move on to the amendment to the city utility rate resolution 2023-07. Reason being, there was a usage fee for the sewer use amended to the previous bill, which I'll read. Resolution number 2023-07, resolution amending the City of Gilbert utility and refuse rates. Whereas the City of Gilbert has established a utility and refuse rate schedule detailing the changes, charges for various services in the City of Gilbert. And whereas the City of Gilbert recognizes additional fees may need to be amended to meet the changing needs of the city. And whereas fees and charges related to municipal utilities are to be set by resolution in accordance with section 50.02 of City of Gilbert's city code. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City of Gilbert that the city council recognizes the need to amend its utility and refuse service rates according to the below schedule. The amendment was the sewer usage per 100 gallons, current rate is .625. The new usage rate will be 0.769. Be it further resolved that the city clerk is directed to amend the current rate schedule and copy be kept on file at City Hall, adopted by the City of Gilbert this 25th day of April 2023.
Your motion?
I believe.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilor Potenon, supported by Councilor Heitzman, to accept resolution Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. None. Motion carries 3-0. And on to new business, the A1 portable restrooms for the summer.
Yeah, this is a bid that I usually do like this for portable restrooms down at campground, down at the beaches, cemetery, all our parks. So, you know, usually we have a, the damage waiver to each one, and then, you know, that's, that's about it. Most of them are all handicap unless there's two of them there. That's what we've been kind of doing, so, and they've been really good. Down at the beaches, when it gets busy in, in summertime, I usually have them come two times a week. Same thing with the campground, if the busy season, I usually have them come two times a week to clean them out. Like I say, it's been, been working really well so far with A1.
So I know in the past, you've had another outfit hit on this.
Yeah, they didn't send me no quotes on this. I was really surprised that they haven't sent nothing, so.
So I guess we, are these prices more than last year, do you know?
I don't think so. I mean, I can take a look, but I don't think, I don't think they are. I mean, I can take a look, but I, I don't think, I don't think they are. I think they're pretty close to being the same price as last year.
So I guess you need that motion now because you have to.
Yeah.
Start installing them soon, right?
Yeah, because I would be, you know, I don't know if we need them this weekend, but I, I expect next weekend we would need them down at the, you know, the campground one anyways, down at the beach one. And then, you know, I like to put them up at the cemetery and some of the parks start getting them as, as, as kids start using the playgrounds and stuff, so.
So I'll make that motion to go ahead with A1's.
Motion by Councilor Potenin, supported by Councilor Heitzman to go ahead with A1 Services' contract for the porta-potties. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero. And the wastewater treatment plant airflow meter.
Yeah, this is a airflow meter. One of the other ones, I don't know if it broke or just went bad. We were told that sometimes they get moisture in them for some reason and they, they go bad. We don't know what happened to this one. It's, it's 10 weeks out. It controls the, the blower. And the, so it controls the blower and how much air each tank, the tank gets. Each tank gets one, one meter, and like I say, this is what controls that. So they kind of got the one kind of in an override until a new one comes in to, until we get a new one.
You won't see it for 10 weeks?
Yeah.
So how many are in service right now?
Ah, three, or two of them are in service right now, but like I say, they got, the, Craig with Total Controls worked his magic and they got something figured out to where it's controlling it, but it's not working. It's not seeing that. So they, they did something until we get a new one to put in.
Was, was there a warranty on the original one?
No, there's not. There is only a one-year warranty and we tried.
But isn't this Kubota, isn't this the new membrane?
No, we didn't, we didn't, we didn't get new D.O. meters or new airflow meters with this, with the Kubota upgrade. They were to use the old ones.
Oh, they're Ovivo?
They're the Ovivo brand, and we were told that they weren't very good, very reliable. There's been a couple of that instances where it sounds like some of the, the equipment that Ovivo sold us isn't the, the, the mid-range or the top quality. It's more of the lower end stuff. So that's what we, what we did, and this is a recommendation of, from Kubota, is to go with this meter, so.
So in other words, the other two could go out at any time now too?
Right.
Yikes.
Yeah.
So that's what Bud did, that's what she came up with next.
Well, and that's what, that's what sucks. It's not, it's not the first time, you know, like, I, we had to buy a couple of, a valve, I think here a month or two ago, and it's the same thing, you know. We're three years into this thing, one of the operating valves goes and it's like, really? Three years? And you guys, so that's, and now this and, but one of the things we're going to look into once they take it out to see if we can get it, if, if we can send it in, get it fixed up for a deal and just have it on the shelf. So we're going to look into that once, once we replace it.
So I'll make the motion to approve the replacing of this airflow meter.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilor Heitzman, seconded by Councilor Potenin to approve the airflow meter as recommended for the amount of $4,377.30. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero.
Do you have a guy there, me that rebuilds these kinds of things or?
No. The, the new Kubota people have been kind of helping us, and that's who, we would talk to them about who would they have recommend rebuilding it if they can. And that's what, that's what we'll do, so.
Excellent, yeah. Thanks.
Moving on to HRA reappointment of, for the Housing and Redevelopment Authority reappointment. Sharon Eslin. To reappoint her, her term is expiring on 5/8. Don't. Following as requested, reappointment to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board of Commissioners, Sharon Eslin, for the term expiring in 2028.
I make the motion to reappoint Sharon Eslin to this Board of Commissioners.
I'll second it.
Motion by Councilor Heitzman, seconded by Councilor Potenin for the reassigning Sharon Eslin to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority reappointment. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed say nay. None. Motion carries three to zero. And ransomware annual training.
This was a request by our IT department. It should be done annually. Each of the council members and all of us have a copy and can read through it. I think what we'll do is we'll make a copy and with our next check disbursement, we'll attach a copy and just ask everybody to read through it. It's informative, good to know even if you're on, using your own personal private stuff, so.
So no, no council action is required?
No.
Is there something you're going to want to check off that acknowledging? We read it or is that something for record keeping?
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt. And with, we send it to everybody's checks, we'll put a little signature and they can return that. So we have met that for safety training of computer use. And then if you guys just want to email me back that you read it, I'll just print it off and put that in there.
Perfect. Okay, and next is the closed session for labor negotiations.
So we'll adjourn the regular meeting at 7:40 PM and then.
Or recess.
Technically we go into a recess, then we, then we, then we call the closed session to work.
Do it, does any voting take place in a closed session, Brian?
No motions and no voting to, in the closed session. The only, the only action we take during a closed session is to close the closed session reverse.
Yeah, we can go, so.
Wherever you.
We will re-regular council meeting at 7:41.
I've got a big one out by my lake place.
Yeah. I don't got a lake place, so not only do I not have a big buck by my lake place, I don't have a lake place. Was I just cussing about lawyers just a minute ago?
I say lake place is misleading, and I've got like a camper on this little lot.
Well, that makes me feel a little bit better.
But I was driving out, October last year, a nine pointer just went up like this.
One of my favorite things to chuckle at when people have deer stories for me, yeah, I was sitting in my stand and I saw this 11 pointer walk by and I couldn't get a shot. Wait a minute, you had time to count the tines and you didn't squeeze the trigger? You weren't hunting. You were, you're making something up, something.